Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We've got a lot of guests in the gallery tonight. Thank you. It is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, and at 6:30, you are at a Common Council of the City of Wausau meeting. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a rule call.
Please press yes. Dawn. Did you press yours, Dawn?
Naughty kitten.
All of the members are present.
Thank you very much. Next item. Thank you. Proclamations. I don't have any in your packet. Next item on our agenda is an educational presentation from our fire chief, Bob Bartek, about additional firefighters and paramedic staff. Thank you for joining us tonight. The floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Can we pull up the PowerPoint presentation, please?
I've got a couple of screens we're working on here.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. All right. I appreciate and thank you for having me speak tonight. For those who don't know me watching at home on television, I'm the newer fire chief for the City of Wausau. I began my tenure as chief on June 7th after appointment by the Police and Fire Commission. And I quickly went to work inside the department, as I had been as the deputy chief. But I quickly went to work in an evaluation mode first to determine the greatest needs inside the department that I needed to address. During a strategic planning process meetings that we had prior to Chief Kajawa's departure in March, one of the things, or a couple of things that kept coming up, one of them at the top for our staff was the need for additional staffing. They are frequently overtaxed on calls. They're frequently running out of staff. They're frequently having to go deep into resources that they shouldn't have to be for, lower acuity calls, the volumes of calls. And it definitely garnered my immediate attention and now, in the last six months, the bulk of my work, working towards this report that I'm going to give you this evening. I asked the mayor, and when I brought this to her, that I wanted to sit down and speak with all of you as a group before we move through the parliamentary process, through the different committees that it's going to have to go through. And I had conversations with Alder McElany today about that, as I have the mayor and HR director and the finance director. And in the last slide, I'll talk about the proposed process that we're seeing to go for this. But this is also a public safety concern that needs to be highlighted, and the public needs to be aware of the weaknesses inside the Wausau Fire Department. It's not easy for us as a department to stand here and reveal our weaknesses. We're typically the pillars of strength in this community when the community needs to lean on others in their time of need. We don't ever ask for help, but today, we begin the process of asking for help. We need additional firefighter paramedics. And I'm going to slowly go through some of the data. I realize I gave you a very large eight-page, data-filled memo, probably full of acronyms and other things you didn't understand. I'd be happy to unpack that for you tonight through these processes, these meetings. And please, just interrupt me at any time if you have a question. I've got a question slide on the very end where we can hopefully address some of those things as they come along. There's been a lot of changes since the Wausau Fire Department was founded. We were founded in 1869. We got our first piece of horse-drawn mechanized apparatus in 1878. The other day, we got to welcome home, I should say the other day, a couple of months ago, we got to welcome home a 1904 horse-drawn steamer that now sits just feet outside my office, right next to a 1936 Peter Persch internal combustion engine pumper. So, our department has been serving this community for over 152 years. And over that 152 years, we've always modeled ourselves, changed ourselves to meet the community needs that are in front of us today, and try to predict what we need in the future to be a resilient department, to be a resilient community. Unfortunately, my report to you tonight is, over the last 50 years, the City of Wausau has stagnated, has done nothing towards improvement in our staffing levels inside our fire department, which is not, as you know, as many of your community don't know, much more than our fire department. Let's go to our next slide, please. So, what's our staffing struggles? So, we're struggling to keep up with the demand for our services. We're seeing higher and higher call volumes. Every year, we track it. It just keeps going up and up. This is not unusual. Any fire department in the state is seeing the same thing, especially one with the same model as we are, where we're doing both fire EMS, a number of other rescue services for the community, in addition to some state resources, i.e. the hazmat team and other things like that. So, this call volume and the workload has steadily increased for decades, and there's been no additional staffing added. Well, there's been some additional staffing added, and I'm going to get to that chart in a minute. Meanwhile, the educational training requirements for us, not just what we demand of our people to know, but the state and federal requirements for justice to do our job have increased. So, the demands for our time have become very, very great. Our firefighters, when they're not on a call, they're spending every waking minute of their maintaining equipment or in training. And every day, it's a different topic, and sometimes we only get to touch on things once a year, and they're very important skill sets that our people need to know to render care and aid in a timely manner and in a safe manner to themselves. So, we've also had a great number of increased programs that have developed to meet those community needs, but we've not received any increase in associated staffing to match those increase in programs. Next slide, please. So, here's a historical comparison of our staffing versus our call volume. So, we went back through our records to try to determine when we had the largest, most recent increase in staffing, and that was 1970. So, in 1970, they went from 56 full-time firefighters to 60. Those firefighters at that time had some first aid training. They had three Cadillacs that they would, you know, they wore long white coats, and they'd just throw somebody in the back of that Cadillac, and they'd drive fast to the hospital. That was care and treatment in 1970. Circa 1975, we were one of the first departments in the state to become EMT basics, and that started the upward trend in what we deliver for high-quality care, emergency medical care to this community from then on. Today, so 1960, excuse me, 1970, we had 60 full-time employees inside the fire department. We were handling 2138 calls that year. In 2020, we sit at 62 full-time employees. That additional staff has been one additional sworn position and one additional administrative position. In 1970, they had three crews of 19 firefighters assigned to each crew. Today, we sit at 18. Somewhere in the department's history, and I can't find out when, they removed firefighters from the field in the operations division to move them to the administration division. Actually, the 61st firefighter was when we just recently added, under Chief Kajawa's tenure, the training division chief. That was a requirement. We really needed that person to continue to be compliant with all the things that we need to comply to. So, there's been no on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground increase in line staffing, but a decrease, actually, since 1970, when we've gone from 19-person crews to 18-person crews. So, last year, in 2020, we actually had a dip in our call responses. It was actually not our highest year. 2019 was the highest year, but I wanted to document 50 years of history and use the most recent year. So, we had 6138 calls for service. So, that equals 200.3% increase in call volume and a 2% increase in staffing over that time. And since then, we will all see other things that we've taken on, and I don't want to drone on and on and on, because we do a lot for this community. We're also, you know, we're the regional hazards materials response team at the technician and specialty level. We've got a myriad of skills in the technical rescue area, from confined space to water rescue, ice rescue, all these things that we're using on an annual basis to effect change in our community, positive change in our community. We've got a second-to-none public education program where we're getting out in our community, talking about having a safe and resilient community to them. We've got unbelievably great people in our code enforcement division, and we're even lending aid now to the county SWAT team with tactical EMS, and we're looking at expansion of that to the mobile field force teams with the county team also. Next slide, please. So, upward trending in call volume. So, where we're at today, actually, our admin was able to help me out today. She ran the numbers through today. As of today, we've run nearly 5,500 calls. We're on track with that, that we're going to be at 60, over 6,500 calls this year. Will be our busiest year in history, and I would expect that in 2022, it'll be our next busiest year in history. So, we need to address the staffing problems beginning now if we want to affect some change down the line. The slight dip in 2020, we saw, and you can look at those numbers in 2020, and see, in April and May, we had that, in April of 2020 was the slowest month we've had in the last five years, and that was because we were doing the lockdown from the COVID. Of course, on the rebound of COVID, we've been, you know, on the front lines of that, taking care of COVID-positive patients or suspected COVID-positive patients inside their homes. Our firefighter and paramedics are the front line for this community's response to COVID. And so, while that call volume might not have been high, the acuity level and the length that it took to mitigate a lot of those calls has lengthened out. Next slide, please. So, what are other comparable fire departments doing in the state? So, I looked to a few of some of these I've got personal ties to, so I did some calls. Nothing more than that they have a very similar model to us, that each of these cities run a fire and EMS model, some with hazmat and some with not. So, really, what I want to start talking about is putting firefighters on our engine companies in the city. And I'm going to talk about it throughout this presentation, but I'll highlight it here first. So, our engines in the City of Wausau, we only have two staff members on it. They have a lieutenant and engineer. They do not have firefighters this time to our engines. As you can see there, most cities do. Eau Claire has three firefighters assigned to their engines. They're actually looking for a referendum in 2022 to add six firefighters to their department. Fond du Lac just successfully passed a referendum last year. They're adding an additional six firefighters, but that's to add an ambulance, a fourth ambulance to that department. They're running three on their engines. Oshkosh, Brookfield, and Wauwatosa, all running four-man engine companies, which is then NFA 1710 compliant. We're not even meeting 50% of the complacency of the national standard where we should be for staffing on our rigs. Next slide, please. So, what's an internal comparable? So, there was some external comparable. So, I asked my great neighbors next door, hey, what were you guys doing in 1970? They pulled out some data. Matt Barnes had a few laughs at some of the things that they were doing in 1970. Those reports, if you read the one that I scanned in, are very interesting to read, the historical data that we have in here. So, in 1970, the Wausau Police Department was at 55 members. Today, they stand at 79. So, they had a 43% increase over the last 50 years in staff. The Wausau Fire Department was at 60, and now we're at 62, again, a 2% increase over the last 50 years. Next slide, please. So, what do these staffing strains mean? Well, it's a myriad of problems that it causes on a daily basis, and luckily, our people are really good on their feet and adjusting and kind of calling the shots as they go as the calls roll in. Concurrent calls are the big problem. We run across a hybrid cross-staff system, and I'm going to talk specifically about cross-staffing on later slide. But in our current cross-staff configuration, when we have concurrent calls or a single high-acuity call, when I talk about that, I mean, a single, say, a structure fire, a working structure fire is a high-acuity call. A shooting, a mass casualty incident, a multiple-vehicle accident, that would be equated to a high-acuity call. When we have any one, if we have multiple concurrent calls or a single high-acuity call, our department is at its capacity or past its capacity, and we're leaning on our neighbors for help, which we're doing on a higher and higher basis every year. The continued growth, again, I talked about 2021 on track to be the busiest year ever. The flaws in this cross-staffing system, and I'm going to talk about that in a different slide again, but they reveal that weakness through our unit reliability. And now, one of the numbers that we look at as chiefs for the determination of, like Fond du Lac did, that they needed to add another ambulance, is they're looking at their unit utilization hour. I'm not going to bore you with the math and the science that I like to geek out on behind that, but what it means is that, okay, we've got a measured number there that we know when we need to tip the scales and add another ambulance. We are not quite there yet where we need to add a fourth ambulance. We have a reserved fourth-out ambulance, and that seems to work all right when we need to have that pressure relief of having that fourth-out ambulance. But our three ambulances are busy enough that 43% of the day, 43% of the hours in a day, while one of our med units or more are engaged in an EMS call, which means that the corresponding engine that goes with that med unit is without its firefighters. And so, that happens on, it seems like it really happens every time we've got a working structure fire, that we always find ourselves shorthanded. And of course, some of the other things that have been recently highlighted, not just our department, but across the state, is we can't fill our five, or our positions. As we stand today, we've got five open positions. We've had nine depart from our department this year. We've only managed to fill four of them. Knock on wood, I've got five people coming in for interviews on Thursday, and they're looking really like some strong candidates. So, even when we do get permission or we get the ability to hire more firefighters, that's the next problem to solve, and that's maybe one of the best, the internal questions I get the most, well, what are you going to do once you get permission to hire more firefighters? I said, I can't wait till I have that problem, until I have those positions to fill, because we'll solve that too. We're problem solvers in our department. So, what does that mean for the current staff that we have when we're running that short? We've got only 18-person crews. We've got 15-person minimum staffing. We're five-position shorts. It means our people are working overtime like crazy, and they're getting forced and mandated all the time on an almost-everyday basis. And I worry about burnout, and I worry about all the other things that go with that. Our people deserve their time off. They deserve their time with their families. They do need not to be working this much. Next slide, please. So, what is cross-staffing? I'm going to talk about it a lot, especially as I move through these next slides. It is not uncommon in small departments to do cross-staffing. The department I came from, I came from Wisconsin Rapids. We were, I always thought we were the kings at cross-staffing. No, Wausau definitely trumps what Rapids is doing as far as cross-staffing. We did have a three-man engine company downtown in Wisconsin Rapids. We don't have that here. So, when we're cross-staffing at all three firehouses, especially, picture Station 2, I like to highlight that, our far western regions, that station, when they respond to a fire, especially when they're moving west, they're going to be out there for a long, long time before they get assistance from the other engine companies coming from the other houses. So, it's a lieutenant and engineer that are assigned to the med unit, and then there's two firefighter paramedics that are assigned to the med unit. If they're all in-house when that fire alarm strikes, perfect. That's the way that system's designed. The two firefighters, actually, one of the firefighters, if it's in the house, will hop onto the engine so he could be donning his SCBA on the route to the fire, while the other firefighter paramedic brings the med unit. We need to have that there to supply medical services for our people while they're on-scene, but then also subsequent concurrent EMS calls that we may have to pull people off the fire to answer. The problem again here, what happens with that is when we have concurrent calls, when we're busy, which we're busier and busier every year. So, the rarely, I shouldn't say rarely, but on strong occasion, the correlating EMS unit, the med unit, that was supposed to supply the firefighters to that fire engine is not available. The other thing that happens with that is that we see our firefighter paramedics never get off the ambulance. Really, our firefighter paramedics, 90% of their job every day is running EMS calls, and they never get a break from that. They never get a rotation onto the engine. They never get a chance to get really good as a firefighter, because they're busy doing their EMS job every day. If we were to put a third firefighter paramedic on each of these engines in the city, that would allow a rotation of our people, where they would, during their three-day swing, where they work their 72 hours over five days, one of those three days, they would be rotated to the engine. Now, there's also an advantage to that on the EMS side. It's not just for fires. So, now, Station 2's, Med 2 is out on a call, and another, say, another high-acuity EMS call comes in on the west side. Now, you've got a three-person crew responding, first responder with that engine, including a firefighter paramedic that's current to the operating on the ambulance, working alongside the engineer and lieutenant, which are most likely paramedics. We've got a few EMT basics still in the mix, but not many. Most of our people are paramedics. So, the cross-staffing has not worked well here. The other spot that we also utilize cross-staffing is at our downtown station. Actually, next slide, I think I've got the slide ready for there. No, not yet. So, I'll talk about that. Our downtown station, if you ever come down for a tour, I'd be happy to walk you through there, and I'm going to take you to the far wing that abuts the PD, and we've got a 100-foot aerial platform there, and we've got our heavy rescue there, and we've got our fourth-out ambulance there, and that's staffed by an engineer and a firefighter. Two people staff those three pieces of apparatus. So, they leave their turnout gear in the center of that room, because they never know which direction they're going to go. So, when a rescue call comes in, as it did as I was leaving the office this afternoon, they grab their turnout gear, they don it, they hop into the rescue rig. The other two rigs sit idle. They're not going to have anyone that can be available to respond with the ladder truck or the EMS unit. And that goes for a fire call, then they're going to be on the ladder truck. Now, what happens there is if they're on a concurrent call, if they're running a rescue call in the townships, or they're somewhere else with the med unit doing a fourth-out med thing, we don't have the ladder truck, or we don't have the heavy rescue available. It's a problematic thing where now we've got to then try to shift people from our engine, get them back to the station. If they're out, grab that unit, somehow get it to a scene. So, I wanted to, I've talked a lot about the annual date and other things, but I wanted to kind of bring this more to life, so I wanted to highlight two days that we had last week, and this is not unusual. Well, I will say that November 2nd was somewhat unusual. It was not our busiest day in history, but it was definitely one of our busier days. We highlighted it on Facebook, which we never do, because we were coming here, and we wanted to start advertising the community that, hey, we're in need here. We've got a, we're a very busy department. So, last Monday, November 1st, there was a fire that struck on the west side, and when that struck, Engine 1's med unit, correlating med unit, Med 1 was out on an EMS call, and the second due engine, Engine 3, meaning the closest proximity, meaning the second due means the first, there's going to be the second ones that get there, their med unit is also out on an EMS call. So, four of our six available firefighters are busy doing EMS work. So, when they arrive on scene, Engine 1 arrives on scene, it's got an acting lieutenant that's in the lieutenant role that day. They've got a working structure fire on the exterior of that building. His engineer goes about their great work of getting the pump working, finding a way to hook a hydrant, making water. The lieutenant looks around, he's got no staff, he's got no firefighters. He grabs a hand line. He goes to work on his own. And now, I've got a nomination on my desk for a heroism award, because we've got an acting lieutenant that went above and beyond putting his own health and safety at risk to try to save anyone that was inside that structure, because we had no firefighters to actually do a real fire attack. So, luckily, the fire was on the exterior, you had to stay on the exterior and extinguish it. When firefighters arrive, they start putting crews together, and they start doing the multi-level search to look for extension, to look for people that might get trapped inside. That's just last Monday. If you remember, we had Shane Willer here for the Christmas Eve fire. Same exact situation. Busy night for EMS calls, and he ends up getting an award for a professionalism award because of his quick actions that night for acting shorthanded. Our city, us, as me as the chief, should never put our people in that situation, that they're so underhanded, that they've got to put acts of valor forward to just do a basic job. So, then the next day, November 2nd, 37 EMS calls in a single 24-hour period, 27 of those occurring between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. That alarm never quit going off, and what you would hear is you would hear our people moving to the hospital, offloading their patient, giving them report, and then quickly calling up as the next call is coming in to take that next call. They've gotten no relief. They've gotten no chance to write the report. They've got no chance to really get a reset before they go in, but they jump back into the mix. We only turned one that day over to, we actually, I think, called in Riverside to assist us on that. We're lucky here that we have Riverside, the safer, so close, and they're such great cooperative partners of ours. They're willing to take, cover us at any point as we are to them, but we shouldn't be in the position where we're reliant on them for those basic days. So, that whole day, 37 EMS calls, the engine companies were running, and a lot of assists on all those calls, because a number of them were high-acuity calls. We had a one-year-old that was pulseless non-breathing. We had a five-year-old that was having a seizure. We had a stroke. We had a couple of chest pain calls, some falls, as we normally do. I know there was a COVID-positive patient in there somewhere. It was unbelievable, the volume and the acuity of those calls as they rolled in. Next slide, please. So, where are we at with comparison in the nation to benchmarks, and what should we be looking at as a community to how we should safely staff our fire department? NFPA 1710, and this is, I've got a typo in that first one. It was published in 2001. Apparently, I was typing 2021 a lot. So, that document's 20 years old, and it was the first document ever that documented how we should be effectively staffing fire apparatus in the U.S. It has become the cornerstone document in the U.S. Fire Service for how we should be staffing. And it clearly states in there that companies in a low-risk area should be staffed at four, and in a high-risk area should be staffed at five to six. When they talk about high-risk, high-hazard occupancies within a jurisdiction, they're talking about elderly, they're talking about elderly housing communities, nursing homes, hospitals, high-rises, assisted-living facilities. And so, actually, all three of our districts have those within them, which would put us in that high-risk jurisdiction. Obviously, our community can't afford to put that number of people on the line. The common, especially, and I've been talking with other fire chiefs around the state, trying to prepare for this presentation tonight and my future presentations at the different committee meetings, it's really three is kind of the Wisconsin standard that as a minimum, and if you're doing anything less than that, the Eau Claire chief put it best to me when I was talking to him, if you're doing anything less than that, the community is really opening themselves up for liability if we have a firefighter hurt or injured, because we have not adequately staffed their apparatus. Next slide, please. Another benchmark that we like to look at is the Insurance Service Office Classification. In 2016, I think I had noted 2015 in the report. I was wrong. It was 2016, the last time that we were evaluated. We got up to a two. This is on a scale of 1 to 10, one being the best departments in the country. Just recently, maybe you saw on the news, Green Bay went to a number one. What that has is it's a direct correlation of the quality of the fire department to the insurance company, so they know how to properly, and Alder Rasmussen could probably explain it better than I do, but they know how to properly articulate to their patrons what they need to charge them for fire protection underneath their insurance policies. Business owners see a much higher savings than homeowners, but homeowners do also. We frequently get calls from insurance companies, what is the proximity of the closest fire station to this address? And we will answer those questions. So, when we were evaluated by the ISO office in 2016, we made it to a Class 2. Unfortunately, we made it to a Class 2 under some false pretenses. It is going to be nearly, we're going to be, if we maintain two when we get evaluated in 2022, it's going to be by the skin of our teeth. And that's because in 2016, and I was not here, the department had acquired a number of structures within the community that were going to be torn down, and we were using those for live-fire training. And somehow, that got equated for us having a training facility in our community for the fire department with a live-burn simulator in it, which we do not. The closest qualifying training facility is actually in Lincoln County, up in Merrill by North Central Technical College. We're currently in conversations with North Central Technical College about building a fire training facility inside our community, inside the greater Wausau area for all the departments in this area, but we don't have one yet. So, I'm going to talk about three different lines specifically in that ISO rating, and I'm going to talk about the ones that relate to the staffing and to the training tower. So, 561 is our deployment analysis. You can see we only scored a 57 out of a possible 100% in that area, and that's because our deployment analysis, the deployment analysis that the ISO uses does not like cross-staffing rigs, and that's what we're doing. And then, company personnel, we ranked even lower yet. We're only at a 56% rate out of what we could have potentially earned, because we are so weakly staffed on the fireside. They do not look at EMS. They look at the rescue, how the rescues are staffed. They look at all the truck companies are staffed. They look at all the engine companies are staffed, and is that staffing being pulled elsewhere during their on-duty time? They don't use NFPA 1710 as a benchmark, but they use portions of it for this accuracy in their classification of a department. It's my goal to take our department to a one. That's the way that we best deliver to our community, but we're going to be lucky if we can hold on to a two. Actually, they had a meeting today with a deputy chief cop, and our training division chief, and our admin had a meeting with the ISO office today, and they echoed the same to our department. Next slide, please. So, what's my recommendation? My recommendation to this council is that, as I proceed to the coming meetings, that we hire at least, a minimum of nine additional firefighter paramedics within the next three years. I say firefighter paramedics. We don't need officers. We don't need tenants. We don't need battalion chiefs. We don't need added beds in the station. We don't need, we don't need further infrastructure. We don't need another building. We need a replacement of some buildings. That'll be another topic for another day. But we need boots-on-the-ground firefighter paramedics to effect a positive change in this community, improve the safety of our people within our department, and give our very best to this community that we have. That is a minimum that we need. How we would use the additional staff, it's simple, we want to put firefighters in the back of our fire engines, we want to take our three engines, we want to put a firefighter paramedic in the backseat of those. I'm tired of seeing a four, a fire apparatus, an engine that is designed to carry four, and they're running around the city with two, and they're understaffed, and it's not safe for the community, and it's not safe for our people. Next slide, please. So what's next? Luckily, as I've been talking about this along the way, I've gotten a lot of great advice along the way. From Alder McElhenney's advice, we feel that we should go next to the Public Health and Safety Committee with this as a community safety issue. Then we'll obviously need to proceed to Health and Human Resources, I've already talked with Tony Vanderboom about that, and then I've been in long conversations with Marianne about going to finance. Those dates might not be accurate, but those are the next ones I saw on the calendar. I see Marianne rolling her eyes at December 28th, I was looking at that too. More likely going to be January. But, you know, this isn't something that we, I realize I've timed this where it's kind of hitting right when the council is approving the 2022 budget. It's not my intention to get this included in the 2022 budget, but to bring it forward to start these conversations today rather than tomorrow, there's never the right time to bring them forward, so today is the day that I bring it to you. What am I doing during that whole time while I'm going to continue to talk with Marianne about some feasible ways? We've got some great ideas about how we can do that. I had a great conversation with the chief from Brookfield, he successfully wrote a SAFER grant last year, which I thought was pie in the eye, not achievable, he's convinced me it's achievable. We're going to be hopefully asking permission to write a SAFER grant, which will provide funding. I believe how that typically works is it's a five-year grant, they fund the firefighter paramedics fully the first two years, then it dwindles down, and then the cities expect to absorb that after that. So I'll be researching the feasibility and preparing to write that grant. And then I'm also going to, under the mayor's direction, continue to find creative and realistic options to improve our resource reliability, meaning that we're going to increase our safety, we're going to increase our ability for us to do our job to our community and to deliver these vital services that we do on an everyday basis. Next slide, please. So that's the end of my presentation, I welcome any questions.
If you have a question, feel free to.
Yep, I do. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, chief. I think that's an important conversation to start here where the entire community can hear you. I also think that the plan to go to all three committees and to council certainly makes sense. That said, with fewer people entering the fire service in a wave of retirements, if we were to be able to come out of those committees with an approach where we would take a phased approach and maybe fund three, three and three, and get some grant funding, whatever, do you believe we'll have recruitment challenges? I know we've addressed a lot of the recruitment and retention issues that the department had before. You know, the reason that we, I think we've been hamstrung a little bit on adding staff is because we've spent the last, I would say, six to eight years addressing a monumental amount of equipment and facilities needs. So we're finally caught up on that. We have decent equipment, now we just need people to put it on. So do you foresee that we'll be able to do successful recruiting and get people in?
Well, first I'll say, is it going to be difficult? Yes, it absolutely is. Are we up for the challenge in finding new and creative ways to welcome people into the department? Absolutely are. Some of the things that I can highlight that we're already working on, Deputy Chief Cop and our Training Division Chief Dave Briggs just successfully ran a first-ever open house career night at Station 2, hugely popular. We're trying to connect with people in this community that aren't going to maybe be our firefighters tomorrow, but maybe a year from now and two years from now, finding the area youth or anyone in Wisconsin that's interested in making Wausau their home and having a great career with inside our department, we're going to find a conduit for that. And so, while I do believe this recruitment retention issue is not going away anytime soon, I've also been in a conversation with Tony Vanderboom about maybe making some changes to how we're recruiting, what we're requiring as training. Now, if you were to come in, as we've talked about in some of the other meetings, not related to me, but the DPW, all right, maybe you don't have that CDL yet, we're going to welcome you into the department, we're going to train you to get that CDL, maybe we need to welcome in paramedics and train them as firefighters, maybe we welcome in firefighters and train them as paramedics. I'd rather not do that, I want people to put on the street tomorrow, but if we can't find people and we can find a way to remove barriers from them to finding employment with our department, I'm willing to break those barriers down, and I can't wait for that challenge.
Thank you for that. I look forward to our discussion on the 15th.
Yes, Alder Killian.
Thank you for the presentation, chief, and I think this is what legitimate government and a legitimate government service looks like, it's invaluable. Thank you for everything you and your team do, and I think whatever it takes, we should make this happen and do it efficiently and rapidly. I think if we can throw millions at wealthy developers, we can fund our fire department, right? And so, you know, I've got a few questions. You had mentioned COVID and how you're on the front line there. Well, you know, I've heard that with COVID, particularly during the lockdown, but maybe in a sustained fashion, that we've seen kind of increased drug use and overdose, also some increased mental health issues, sometimes perhaps even as dramatic as suicide. So it seems like just in this period, there may be even more reason, as you mentioned, more calls in that context. Do you know, other than some of the things you've mentioned, are there some relevant COVID or relief funds that we could look into or tap into that might be relevant to the things you've asked? Because I think some of these health issues do seem relevant to the pandemic, and I thought perhaps maybe there's some novel funding out there as well.
Yes, well, I appreciate that question. While I have not seen anything COVID-specific related to staffing, we did successfully write an assistance to firefighters grant specific to COVID last year, Forts the Mask, the N95s, booties, you know, additional gloves and things like that, but we have not, I've not seen anything related to COVID for staffing. Now, that SAFER grant that we had talked about, I'm expecting, we weren't expecting that announcement to come for the posting of that grant until sometime next spring. Typically, that's when they happen, and I was also expecting it to happen right about the time that they announced the normal AFG grant, which we've successfully written in past years. Now, just last week, they announced the posting of the AFG grant early. Well, they're actually trying to catch up, it's actually the 2021 AFG grant. It's my hope that maybe with all this money being thrown in the federal government at infrastructure and other things, that maybe they put more money into that SAFER grant because every chief that I've talked to is pursuing more people inside their department. And I think a lot of it is related to this, it's been a drastic change. You know, I spent 14 years on a med unit, and I have such an appreciation for what our people are doing today because I didn't have to wear a mask on every call, I didn't have to decon to the level that they have to on every call. It's totally changed how they do their work and how they approach their patients. And so I hope that there's some recognition at the federal level to maybe identify some grant dollars there. I'm not aware of any yet, but believe me, my ears to the rail on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Ryan.
Thank you, mayor. I was going to mention that my former sister-in-law lived in Elkhorn back in the 90s, and she was barely five feet in her fire equipment as a volunteer, so, but she was out there with the guys. And so, have you thought about recruiting with other volunteer fire departments or looking at people that may be going into the medical field and then may want to change and do something different? Thank you.
So I think the best way to answer that recruiting question is, is a lot of times the volunteer fire departments that surround us have different requirements. Our people need to be at the paramedic level where they only need to be required to be the EMT basic level, but as far as joining in on some of the cooperative hiring stuff, for a long time, the city had participated in the Chippewa Valley Technical College hiring process, it was a, they would advertise to multiple departments, the candidates would only have to go to that one source for an application, we would get applicants off that list. That fell out of favor, we weren't getting many candidates out of that, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze, as they would say, we weren't getting enough qualified candidates out of that to pay the money to Chippewa Valley Technical College. Although now this next year, we are looking, Fox Valley Technical College has adopted a similar process, I'd like to be involved in that. Next year, it's fairly affordable, I think it's like $1,200, and we can be cooperatively hiring with other departments like ours, but we're also competing against those departments for a small pool of candidates.
So I think what the policy questions that we're looking to answer is, A, do we need to move forward with this? How do we want to proceed? What funding mechanism do we want to do? This is one of those hot topics that's been across the state and region, I mean nationally. The Fond du Lac Public Safety referendum that recently passed had 70% support among Fond du Lac voters, and that was increasing their levy by $1.3 million to fund it. So there's some of that, similar things happened in South Milwaukee. I know you mentioned Brookfield and a couple other, this was the hot topic at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference. We are all not only trying to figure out how to get more firefighters, but how to fill those positions too. If there aren't any more questions, I want to thank you and thank your staff for showing support. We know it's really important, and we thank you for everything you do serving Wausau.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to stick around, you're more than welcome, otherwise I can give you a little second to relieve yourself. I know how it gets. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our Pre-Registered Citizens for Matters appearing on the agenda, another public comment. Looks like I only have one person who's registered, that's Terry Killian. Feel free to approach the podium. Got three minutes. Thank you.
Hopefully, it won't be that long. Terry Killian, 133 East Thomas Street in Wausau. As most of you are probably aware, I have had the opportunity to participate in civic matters of some sort over the past several years. Since the application for funding for $10.5 million for the Waus Bridge was made public, I don't think I have ever, ever seen or heard such a strong emotional outcry from citizens of this city and surrounding communities. People have expressed outrage, disgust, anger, they're appalled and disappointed. These are some of the adjectives which I not only read, but I have heard. Our council and city staff are comprised of extremely capable, intelligent people. These are people who should be able to recognize and assess what the real needs of the community are at this time because of and as a result of COVID. It's a nice idea to encourage public participation by putting a form online for residents to fill out and provide their vision of what the city should be. But which of those people now living in their cars, now unable to pay for their rent or their mortgage, now unable to provide adequate nutrition for their children, now unable to work because they can't afford childcare, now with a language barrier, are now currently living under an already existing bridge? Which of these people are going to fill out that form? Are those individuals who really need to provide information about what they need from the city able to or capable of providing that particular kind of information? I don't think so. We have statistics, we have news coverage, we have all been made aware of the plight of so many in our community. When we have an opportunity for funding to assist so many who are in real need, how can we even suggest using those funds for a decadent bridge? Please use this funding for genuine COVID-related problems and for the difficulties and challenges which COVID has caused for our citizens. That's the intent of the grant. I ask you, no, I don't ask you, I implore you, really see these people, really listen to these people, because they are the ones who need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. It is file number 211001 through file number 210108. I would entertain a motion of a motion by Rasmussen and a second by Herbst. Is there any discussion? Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next item is mayor's appointments. We do not have any for you to approve today. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing on the proposed 2022 City of Wausau budget. So I don't know if we want to give a little bit of a presentation before we open it up, but we do have the finance director here, so let's do it.
Okay. So we did go through quite a rigorous process this year. I'm sure many of you heard that we have been focusing on retention and recruiting of staff because we've been having problems filling positions. And so a large portion of our budget actually is going to our personnel costs. Just to go through kind of a list of some of those things, this year, we experienced a larger increase in our health insurance premiums than we have been experiencing in past years. That increase was 8.8%. Our non-represented employees, the pay scale had not been adjusted for any cost of living in the last few years, so the budget contains a 2% lift in salaries for our non-represented employees. The budget includes the agreed-upon union contracts with our police, fire, and transit unions. We included in there the final implementation of the non-represented salary study, also known as Option 3, that has been phased in over several years. We also have included in the budget faster progression through the step increases for our non-represented. Our HR department and director went through a survey with employees to see what were some of the concerns that our employees had and what their impression was as far as why we were losing staff. And that was one of the pieces of feedback that we received was that it took people too long to progress in the system. So the budget now contains faster progression, so people lower than midpoint will progress two steps per year versus one step. And it also basically put a hiatus on steps one and two, so that people will start within the system at step three. We also received retirement rate increases from the Wisconsin Retirement System, and those are in there as well, along with investment in cybersecurity and prevention and detection for CCITC. I'm sure, you know, when you read the papers or listen to the news, cybersecurity is becoming a very critical situation throughout the United States and world, and, you know, companies are being held hostage through ransomware-type of strategies. And so we, the CCITC hired cybersecurity specialists to evaluate our systems and provide recommendations, and so this additional funding helps us step up our game to be, protect our systems from cybersecurity attack. When we were looking at the budget, knowing that we had all of these additional investments that we wanted to make in our employees, we knew that we had to control costs in other areas because we need to make sure that our budget is still affordable. And so we really took a hard stance on our other operating areas, and so we asked departments to go back to their budgets, and we basically took out any other budget increases outside of personnel costs. And then we had them apply for additional funding. And so the departments did go back to their budgets and tried to eliminate any other cost increases, and through that application process, we were able to delineate what increases were necessary and basically mandatory because there were contracts associated with them or there was some other obligation that we had, what were necessary to meet our minimum needs for the department, and then what were some of the wishes that we had for progression in other things. So examples of contracts that were funded would be the school crossing guard contract, the contracts that we have with our refuse and recycling curbside pickup, the continued Emerald Ash Borer treatment expenses and tree replacements. the continued Emerald Ash Borer treatment expenses and tree replacements. They had originally asked for, to step that up a bit, but we just continued to fund that as we did in the 2021 budget. And then we did increase our hotmix budget for street patching efforts. But really, in other areas, it was a very basic budget. We had received, I think, three requests for additional positions. One in the Community Development Department for a part-time administrative assistant. One in the police that would be shared with fire as a part-time administrative assistant. And then positions within the Parks Department for a shared arborist and then like a seasonal pool person. So those were not funded. So this basically is the existing FTEs. There's no additional positions in the budget. So even with all that work, we're looking at about a $2 million levy increase. We spent quite a bit of time in finance to talk about the usual, kind of unusual circumstance we found ourselves in. And, you know, historically, we have noticed similar situations in the past. So in 2020, we were in the midst of a revaluation. And if you recall, the city functions and the state of Wisconsin functions on a dual value system. So our local assessor determines the value of each parcel in the city for residential and commercial property. The state still serves as the assessor for manufacturing. But then the state's job, in addition to being the assessor for manufacturing, is they establish the equalized value for each municipality in the state of Wisconsin. They're not doing it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, but they're looking at the total value of the city. And they are establishing, and that equalized value is somewhat supposed to replicate market. And they establish that by taking information that they get from our local assessor and comparing that to outside information such as sales data. So if they see, let's say, one assessor who maybe is, there's a trend that residential property is undervalued, that equalization process brings it to market. There might be another assessor who's maybe more aggressive, and their values are a little bit higher than market. That equalization is necessary because schools, counties, technical colleges are allocating their taxes across multiple municipalities. So if you can see that if there was no equalization process, that assessors who undervalued their property, those communities would have to pay less of the school, county, and technical college taxes. And so there could be motivations to assess in certain ways. So that equalization process is supposed to correct that possible imbalance. Because we were in the midst of a revaluation, we submit estimates to the state, and then the state uses those estimates to establish the equalized value. State law says that the following year, they go back and look at and compare that information. And if there are errors in the estimates that we've used, that they have to go through and correct them in the in the current year. So we found ourselves in a very unusual situation where our equalized value for the overall city decreased 2%, even though Marathon Counties increased 5% overall. And we found that our tax increment districts increased significantly because there were corrections of about $93 million. So that's a one-year correction, and then that will get removed from the computation of equalized value in the next year. So we were truly trying to control costs to kind of manage these swings in the equalized value process. So even though our levy is increasing about $2 million and our city assessed tax rate is proposed to go up just under 50 cents, taxpayers will actually see a decrease in their tax bills this year because of that shift in our overall equalized value. And then, like I said, those corrections, particularly in our TIF districts, will reverse out next year because it's a one-year step process. For your TIF districts, it's a two-year step process for the overall equalized value. So we are still expecting the overall tax rate to go down for both the Wausa School District area and the D.C. Everest. But again, that is because our share of that overall tax value is decreasing over time. So in addition to our emphasis on personnel costs, we also have a larger-than-usual capital plan this year. And the main areas of increase in the capital plan revolve around the new ERP software and preparing ourselves for the new DPW facility. So the ERP is in the budget and $1.1 million for the DPW facility. So those are, and then in addition to those, we have our typical street projects, about $3 million for streets and a variety of other projects. And I guess that's the highlights of the budget. We didn't see a lot of change in our revenues. Oh, one other point I'd like to bring out that when we were going through the capital budget, there were areas that we highlighted could be used for ARPA funds. And that would be the city's ARPA money. And the Finance Committee did make those allocations. I can go through those. We used about $49,000 for our public access closed caption, one-time purchase, $81,000 for drinking fountain replacement in our parks. And then there were some small upgrades to computer software specifically related to cybersecurity and improving access, and those totaled about $83,000. And then we also applied about $850,000 of ARPA funds from that lost revenue category to decrease our borrowing. One other point I want to discuss is our transit levy. We have been levying about $900,000 for transit each year. Transit received sizable allocations of CARES funds, which was a different pot of COVID money. Those funds are helping him meet not only his capital needs, but his operating needs. But he was concerned that he wanted the city to continue to levy funds so that when his CARES funds are exhausted, that he would be able to have those funds available for meeting his his gap in his operating budget, what the federal and state and his ridership funds don't meet. And so our proposal to the Finance Committee and their agreement with that took that about $900,000 of transit levy, reduced it down to just under $400,000, and then took that difference, that $500,000, and applied it again to the capital budget, knowing that that would be a one-time application of the capital budget, and it would be available to go back to transit when their needs returned. So that's the, I guess, main things.
Okay. Is it appropriate to have questions from the council members before the public hearing or? Okay, so I haven't opened it yet, so. I will now open the public hearing. So if you're here and you'd like to talk to us about what you heard about the budget or any suggestions, you have three minutes to do so. We welcome you. Okay, I'm going to ask a second time if anybody is here and would like to speak to our budget public hearing. We would welcome you to the podium to give us your thoughts. Okay, for the last time, you are welcome to to join us for the public hearing. You have three minutes. Anyone? Okay, I guess I am going to close this public hearing. And I guess now is the appropriate time for us to have a little discussion as a council. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mary Ann, for your presentation. I just have one question. Where does the city lie sit for its overall debt level now?
Right. So at the end of 2020, so last year, we were sitting for our general obligation debt of, we were at $76,500,000. At the end of this year, we will be at, oh, excuse me, that's what we're, will be at the end of this year. At the end of last year, we were at $81,790. So last year, we were at $81,790. This year, in a month and a half, we'll be at $76,500. And then at the end of next year, based on this budget and based on our amortization schedules, we'll be down another $2 million in outstanding debt, down to $74,000.5. The utility revenue bonds are at $16 million at the end of this year and will be at $14.7 at the end of next year. We didn't really do a prediction of where we would be on the clean water and the safe drinking water loans because those are on a draw schedule, and it's hard to predict what the draws will be at that time. But so our our trends continue to go down on debt even with the proposed borrowing in the 2022 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just wanted to offer that I think this is a budget that we can be proud of. The Finance Committee held some great discussion in its three workshops. This budget, you'll remember, we started out with over $1 million of shortfall in our, just in our cost to continue. We have navigated those waters, and so we've created a budget here that not only meets our contractual obligations, but it contemplates the impacts of inflation, which we all know is increasing. It forwards all proposed road projects. We did not cut street projects to avoid a mill rate increase, which councils historically have have been anxious to do. And we continue all services to our citizens that they receive and appreciate. So with that, even though the mill rate decrease as a result of this equalized value pickup is a, you know, short-term impact, it's something to be happy about. Obviously, the bills are going down. I'm sure next year, when that levels itself out, it may be the opposite. But, you know, we're able to achieve all of those things and continue the things that residents want and expect without a huge increase. So I think that the Finance Committee did a lot of the heavy lifting with getting those decisions made and prioritizing the needs. But I also want to thank the staff and the department heads that prepared those budgets and, you know, came back to the table, cut their budgets back to the prior year's level, and then applied for those supplements and let us score and rank them and with the trust that we would identify and prioritize their true needs. So thank you to everyone whose work generated the book we have in front of us, because I think it's good work. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the council? Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have mentioned in some of the finance that as as part of what's been happening for the Wausau events, as well as the River District, as well as the Entrepreneurship Center, that they have been using the accounting staff and Mary Ann to generate all of their accounting at no cost and no costs that the city is indicating of that time. And I am concerned with that, that we do have a lot of other small businesses that do pick that up and that I have recommended that we end that relationship as of December 31 of this year. And that as part of that, we should be doing as part of this budget to encourage them and notify these organizations that they are, can make their decision-making on their own to get their own accounting affairs in order and handle that. But with the upcoming accounting and HR systems, there is not time for the existing staff. And we, as fiduciary power, we should be not be subsidizing these three groups. They've been in business a long time. They have executive directors. They can hire someone else to be doing that. But at some point, if they do want to, they should be charged, and we could include that as additional revenue. And in my opinion, I would think for the checks being issued and payments being made and accounting reports, that probably average somewhere between maybe $25 to $50 a check. So that could be determined. So I would hope that the council does decide to part ways, that they have been, have plenty of time to be able to do that and to say that it's not taking any time of city staff is inappropriate and is not fair to other organizations that have to pay for their own accounting services. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. While I think that that's certainly a discussion we can have going forward, I also think that we also need to be mindful of the fact that when we increase operating costs for those entities, both that we fund with room tax and that we fund to host events in our community, that we fund to generate economic development in our community, when you ramp up their overhead, they, their increased costs will be felt elsewhere. And so I think that we need to be mindful about those discussions. And, you know, under the circumstances, you know, with where the economy is just starting to recover, there's probably not a worse time to pull the rug out. So if we want to have those conversations going forward, I think we should be thoughtful and cautious in our approach, but, you know, certainly not do it right now.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in terms of what we just heard, Mary Ann, pardon me, Ms. Groot, what would you estimate that we're we're spending in in these relationships on these services that have been described by my colleagues here?
We could do a time study. I don't know. So just to give you kind of some background information, they enter their payments in the software to pay bills, and then their bills are paid with our regular bills each week. So, you know, there is a little bit of staff time, but not much on a weekly basis. And then when they have, collect money, let's say, for their programs or whatever, they deposit that at the city, and it's basically part of our operating cash. So we're holding those funds in trust on their behalf. And so, you know, it's a few deposits here and there. And then we do perform payroll for them. We use an outside payroll company. So it's basically entering the timesheets for the, you know, one or two employees every other week. And that software, you know, has a ACH built in, so the people are paid through ACH. That that company does the W-2 issuance and has an online portal where they can access their W-2. So it's very hands-free as far as our employees are concerned, and they pay for that service, which is like $50, I want to say, a month for the payroll service. And then we do help them do a monthly financial report each month, and then we do their 990 tax return at the end of the year. So to kind of give you a kind of background, in the Entrepreneurial Center, doesn't have any employees, so we don't do payroll for them. The city did sign an agreement with the Entrepreneurial Center that we committed to doing accounting services. I think that was renewed just in the last year, I would say.
Is this part of the budget proposal?
Well, I guess it's built in. We wouldn't be able to eliminate staff if we stopped doing this work. I mean, so there would be no actual cash savings. We'd be able to, I suppose, redirect our work, but it wouldn't provide any actual cash savings.
Thank you. And just to keep it germane or underscore why it is germane, it was what District 7 had brought up about our partners on events. And this deals with money and fiscal contributions, therefore, it is related to. Therefore, it is related to budget. And we had discussed this in Parks, Parks and Rec some time ago. And I think, you know, part of the concern with these fiscal items, you know, how the city is, is dealing with money with certain groups, wasn't just the numerical values in the spreadsheet. It was what they represent in terms of policy and is that equitable? You know, so we asked ourselves, if we're going to be doing this for some, how can we not be doing it for others? And I only bring this up because of District Seven's comment on our events partners and how it's a tough time to make some fiscal cuts right now. But I think when looking at budget, it's not just those numerical values. I think it's asking ourselves, are we doing these things consistently and equitably? So I think it would go beyond just cost savings, but perhaps looking at how we handle finances in a more equitable way for the community. Thank you.
I, I do think, you know, some of these things have evolved with history. So when the River District was applying for Main Street, that was when the financial arrangement occurred there. So, you know, Main Street programs are generally a partnership between government and organization that's trying to support and develop a downtown. So before they went for Main Street designation from the state of Wisconsin, they came to the city and said, what are some ways that we can partner? And that was one of the ways that we partnered with them. When Wassa Events, and this was right when I, nearly when I started, Wassa Events was basically struggling to exist because they were being displaced by the Chamber of Commerce. They came to the city. There was a discussion of the council of whether to make those positions city positions or how Wassa Events at the time should be structured. Again, that's when the, this type of assistance occurred. They, the city council decided, no, they didn't want them to be city employees, but they wanted to have this partnership. So that's, you know, it's, I think, it wasn't just kind of an arbitrary thing. It was through those historical, and then with the Entrepreneurial Center, it was the same thing. The Entrepreneurial Center has always had a strong relationship with the city. And, you know, again, this was before my time. We've been doing the accounting for them since they were in the 1300 Cleveland Avenue site. So, long time.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. The point is, there's lots of small businesses that are paying their share and hiring their own staff. And part of the issue I'm, I'm addressing is that we have put no value of the accounting staff time on handling these administrative tasks for these three not-for-profits. There is the Community Foundation that is willing to take on these other functions at a small percentage of their revenue. They are not-for-profits, so they can go ahead and ask for additional fundraising. But we are doing the accounting work of three organizations where when we're looking at within our municipality, there are hundreds of employers that are paying for this and they're wondering, why is the city doing this favor? And they're not accounting for anything. And I do think if Mary Ann did do the check registers, we could easily determine how many checks are issued for each group. Put it at $25 or $50 per transaction and you can come up with something and what there's costs of that, of that share of revenue that should be built in the budget. But I think it's perfect timing. It's been going on a long time, from what I understand, from early 2000. They are, have executive directors. They should be capable, within their boards, to go ahead and discuss this and see about hiring someone part-time. But it's time for them to be let go and be responsible, just as other businesses are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, we will move on. All right, thank you very much. Our next item on our agenda is item number 150613. It's a resolution from the Economic Development Committee approving Fourth Amendment to Blenker River East Brownstone's Development Agreement, Phase Three. Would entertain a motion. Motion by Neil. The second by someone, Rasmussen. Any questions, further explanations needed? I'm not seeing anybody.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is file number 201109. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee authorizing the 2021 budget modification for Public Works Sign Shop. Would entertain a motion. Motion by Killian, second by Martins. Any questions or discussion? I don't see any.
Begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Now, we find ourselves in kind of an interesting situation here. We have a suspension of the rules request for a file number 211105. That's the resolution approving the slate of city projects for which grant application will be made to the State of Wisconsin Neighborhood Investment Fund Program. Now, there was no motion made at Finance. And so this item isn't really, what did we, I, I talked to the city attorney ahead of time and we talked about what we should do with this.
Well, it's somewhat mooted and we had talked about, if there's no recommendation coming from a committee, that would probably be another rule whose application we'd need to suspend other than it being back-to-back. But I felt when I was consulted that it was irresponsible not to anticipate what action may be required at Finance because if action were taken, then the council would not be able to act if there was nothing on the agenda and the grant is due in two days. So I know there's some people that are of the body that are expecting to talk about this. So I think the decision belongs to the body and I've advised the mayor that, much like a while back when you all thought that you were about to commit an open meeting violation, you, the majority of you voted not to discuss an item. I've recommended tonight that you take a vote on whether or not you wish to discuss and take possible action on this item that's been placed on the agenda in anticipation of possible action coming out of Finance.
So I don't know if it makes sense to vote on the suspension of the rules, assuming that that is what you want to do? Or if we'd like to maybe take?
I think this is also unusual. I think I would ask if they want to discuss it and then we can take the, I mean, I think then you've assumed they're going to suspend the vote. You can take that formal vote to suspend the rule if you wish.
So not to ask too many questions before we do this, but am I okay asking for a hand, a hand raise or, okay, that's appropriate? Okay, maybe it would be easier for the clerk if we used our buttons. So if you don't mind not having a request to speak yet, okay.
So those in favor of wanting to discuss this item, entertain the item that's been placed on the agenda, but it's a little narrower than the one that was on the Finance agenda.
Right.
It's discussed in more specificity. But vote yes if you want to discuss it and no if you don't, please.
Do you have a question, Alder Peckham? Oh, there are questions. Alder Peckham and then Alder Killian.
Okay, thank you. If we would opt to not discuss this, would we be basically reverting back to a process that was described earlier where if staff are aware of a grant opportunity that does not require a local match, that they would just go for it?
So this one, I would, I'd like to answer that one. This, you are only voting tonight to discuss this grant application. I think we've taken it to ourselves to say, we obviously need a process improvement. And so that will be coming to a committee in the future, that improvement. But that's not what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, I'm less worried about the process and more worried about the practical. If we don't discuss this, what happens?
You don't get to discuss it.
Then it just?
And then the grant applications, however they number, will be submitted by the deadline by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Without input from council.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yep. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions. So Ms. Jacobson, you, you had put this on the agenda, is that correct?
With the mayor's acquiescence, yes.
Yes, so did you choose the language of the agenda item?
I did, based on what I was informed was the basis for the Finance Committee agenda item.
I, I think, you know, in, in terms of comparing this to the situation you referenced that we faced a few months ago where there was concern about open meetings violation. Our city attorney had not drafted the agenda language. I think that's very important. And I think without putting you on the spot, I mean, we don't have to go, go over them, but there are a very kind of limited parameters of kind of what would indicate an, an open meetings violation or whether the agenda item is sufficient. I think there may be three, three parameters. Let's look at just two of them. Does this give the, you know, the citizen, does it give them enough idea of what we're going to be talking about so that if they wanted to attend or what have you, they would know? And I, I believe it does. And the second would be, you know, does it burden the government to place more explanation in the agenda language? And I think this is quite good, but given you didn't know perhaps what would happen at Finance, that burden may exist. So we don't even have to talk about the third parameter. I think, I think we, we look good here on open meetings. And I think the last time, you know, we were concerned about it looking like an open meetings violation because it looked like an open meetings violation. This seems to satisfy the standards of Boozwell, is that what it is, I think? But looks good to me, so, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that the lack of action in the Finance Committee really renders this moot. And I will say that only because historically, our practice has been, and, you know, if we want a different policy going forward, fine. But our practice has been that when a grant request identified by staff increases our revenue, reduces our cost and contains no local matching funds that need to be pre-approved, the staff has the authority to go forward with those applications. And if those grants, then after the vetting process takes place, are awarded, we then vote to accept that money. And so that would be a separate step. If any of these projects come back accepted, the Finance Committee then would vote to accept the grant and move the project forward. So we have that, there's no local match on these and that's where we did not take action in Finance. So I, I'm going to vote not to discuss this because I think we handled it.
Okay. Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. It happens, I have had a number of people contact me and are outraged that this is being done. They're also outraged at the City Council because they feel that they're rubber stamping that. And I have said, no, I am outraged and this is something that's inappropriate and, and should not be a question. And I mentioned this at Finance, but I realized some people were not there, as well as council people. But as of Thursday, September 9th, 2021, at 3:26 PM.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Alder Ryan, but we're discussing whether or not we want to discuss this?
I did inform Greg Subert, Liz Broderick, Betty Noel, copied Katie Rosenberg, Becky McElhany.
Point of order, please, let's get back on the subject.
Andy Witt regarding.
Excuse me, Alder Ryan.
See below program that municipalities could potentially apply for soon.
Okay, Alder, Alder Ryan, Alder Ryan.
Hope to see this discussion in upcoming meetings. We were not included, it was not discussed with us. We need to review this and represent our neighbors.
I think you're best.
Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on this before discussing any further. What your vote, yes, Alder McElhany.
A question, because I just want this, it says resolution approving. It doesn't say just discussing. So I think maybe that was kind of Alder Rasmussen's point, it, correct? You know, this goes beyond discussing and since there isn't action, that's, that's, how do we? I mean, I want that clarified by the parliamentarian because we didn't have definitive action. I, I don't mind if there's discussion, I just don't know. I mean, I just don't want, I don't want to understand if I'm voting for discussion that it will go automatically to a vote because we hadn't had a vote in Finance. And I want to make sure that we are doing this correctly.
It is unusual, but at the end of the day, the council is the governing body representing the client, the city, and, and body represented by you elected officials. When you are not in agreement with one another, it makes it difficult for me to advise you. I was, I didn't know about the background conversations. I was called and asked what that meant on the Finance agenda and I had no idea. I did not draft the Finance agenda, I did not know what discussion and possible action meant. I assumed that they were, staff was recommending, although I did not find that in the packet, some manner of action that they were looking for or I didn't think action would have been included on the agenda. So I was trying to anticipate what might be needed on the council agenda with enough specificity to meet the open meetings law. And I was told that, that we were going to discuss and approve which projects would be allowed to move forward with individual applications. And so that's why I drafted it the way I did. Now, you're right, typically, we don't advance thing, we don't take up discussions and take action on things when they're not recommended or advanced by a standing committee. But we've done a lot of things that are not typical for our procedure or practice and sometimes with my advice and sometimes against my advice. So at the end of the day, what harm is there in discussing it? If the majority of the body wants to do that. And so the, the decision really belongs to the body. It is on the agenda. You can discuss it. I mean, we don't put discussion and possible action on the council agenda. We usually have resolutions prepared, but it was impossible to prepare a resolution. So I did the best I could to anticipate what I was told was likely to come out of the Finance Committee. So if you don't, I mean, normally, we would not if it's not forwarded on a recommendation to council. So that's what you are going to decide as a majority. Do you want that poll because there is no recommendation before you? Or like Finance, do you want to discuss it as council? And you may or may not make a motion that gets a second to vote upon. It's really your decision, it's the body's decision.
Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, I've already got the, the one answer to it is, if, if we vote no, we're not going to be able to discuss it and the city will go on and apply for these $10 million or 10, 15 million, whatever, dollars for that. And if we vote yes to discuss it, the only problem I, the only question I have is, is Waz is not mentioned in here. I imagine that is what the council basically wants to discuss about anyway, you know, and would be, be able to take a vote on that tonight as we're approving that or disapproving that Waz request.
So we should probably have Director Broderick explain which applications, as she did at Finance for council, since maybe we're not all here, which projects, again, that they are planning on applying for. Each project requires a separate, separate application and it would be germane, if you decide to discuss this, to talk about the, each individual project and whether you want that grant application to go in on that project. I don't think I needed to specifically, I did not, I did not know what the projects were until Finance tonight. So I couldn't put that on the agenda.
I don't think we're ready yet, we don't know that we want to discuss it.
No, but if, if.
Yes, if we've moved forward.
If there's a consensus to not discuss it because it hasn't come forward on a, on a recommendation from Finance, then we're done. But I, I don't know how the majority of the body feels at this point.
Right, we haven't voted yet, we're still discussing whether we want to discuss. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess first recall that this item originally came to ED last week or Economic Development as an update. It was not slated for action there because there was no local match. So that said, there was a volume of complaints to the council president that people wanted more discussion and more clarity on what the program actually was. What qualifies, what doesn't, what the requirements are, what the criteria is. There was a call for a committee of the whole, there wasn't time for that. And so my proposal to the council president was we had. And so my proposal to the council president was, we had a Finance Committee meeting coming on Tuesday, grants involve money. I was willing to add it to my agenda, so we could have another public-facing discussion about what that program is, and what qualifies, and the rationale for their application. So we vetted that in the committee, but the discussion of possible action language in the committee was not sought to create action by the committee, because their standing practice was, if there was no local match, they were not voting to approve the submission of grants. So when it was identified that this fund has no local match, they're straight grant funds, there was no action then at that point for the committee to take, based on its historical, historical role in the process. And so we did not act in Finance for that reason. And that's why I think we've handled this process already, so...
Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I realize not everyone in the room, or those alders that may have come in late, but I have expressed my concern that, as well as from a number of residents, that this proposal is being done without the input of the council, and that we are being looked at as if we approve of this being done without our knowledge, our involvement, and our advice. As I said, I have an email dated September 9th to key people, asking them to look at these grants and get us, and we should be hearing in upcoming meetings about these grants. I was at home, watching it on YouTube, the economic development. I was shocked, as a grants person for over 20 years, to see that anything this kind of large of money can be one-way by the staff and the mayor, and, and the city council being, are you going to slam dunk a white elephant that's not necessary just to help one organization? Or are you going to be looking at this? And in my opinion, and as what I stated at Finance, I'm appalled, I'm outraged, that we are in such a mess, and even considering doing that application without council approval and involvement. And I said last week, we should have been meeting as a committee of a whole. This is too important, and in my opinion, the whole grants process needs to be reviewed. We should not, as our fiduciary role, be letting city staff and the mayor go ahead and apply for a pink elephant grant without our involvement. And it just shows, there is this difference here, and I am going to be always on transparency and accountability. And if anything needs to be done, this is the time. Our residents are waiting to hear, what will we decide? Will we go ahead and say no? Staff can do what they want? Well, then, you're going to see a number of people voting no. And I, as an alder, this may determine your future of how your residents look at you. So I would encourage you to consider looking at it. It is too important, and it's not appropriate in your fiduciary role to let them have this much control. Thank you.
Just a reminder, everyone, we are discussing whether we want to discuss this item. Alder Rasmussen, you've spoken a couple times, but unless there's...
So, I guess just to clarify...
Point of order, if we're going to be sticking with Robert's rules, Alder Rasmussen has already had her two chances to speak.
This is a procedural matter. So, in response to Alder Ryan, we have an oversight role in this process, but it is not at the point of application. That's where the confusion is. So our staff applies for grants every month for things. The police apply for grants, the fire applies for grants, our development team applies for grants. We've applied for development grants for planning and EPA. When those grants are awarded, we have no idea what, if any of these are going to get funded. Once that award comes in, that's when we vote to accept the grant, and that's when the project moves forward or not. You get a chance to say thank you, but no thank you, or, yes, we want the money. That's when our role comes in. It's not today. When there's no local match, they apply, and if the award comes in, we accept it. That's what we've historically done.
Okay. As a reminder, we are discussing whether we want to discuss. Alder Killian.
Madam Mayor, could I just call the question to the original question of whether we're going to discuss?
All right. Is there any opposition to calling the question?
After I speak, you've already called on me, Madam Chair, so I've...
Well, I think, when somebody calls the question, I think it's, as far as parliamentarian goes, that's the point we are. So if we have the question called, is there opposition to that?
He had interrupted me. Had he done that before, I'd been called, and I think that would have been proper procedure, but I'd like the courtesy of the floor.
So I'm guessing you have opposition to calling the question?
I'd like to not be interrupted by my colleague again, for one.
So, Killian, finish, and then let's take the vote. We, we are crossing into discussing this matter.
Thank you. So I had requested from the city attorney that this be placed on the agenda, so I should be able to explain very clearly what the motivation was for discussing it. And yes, it was not what District Seven described, and as the individual who requested it from the city attorney, I'm in a unique position to be able to say that was not why this was put on here. So I would like to see this discussed. There's no reason for us not to discuss public policy in, in daylight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are ready to vote. You're voting yes, if you would like to discuss this matter further, the grant application. You're voting no, if you would like to not do that.
You may begin voting. The motion fails four to seven.
Okay. So it looks like we are not going to be discussing this item tonight. Moving on to the last item on our agenda, it is public comment and suggestion. I would invite anybody who has any public comment. Okay? Thank you very much for... We can do that after we adjourn. The last item on our agenda, then, is a motion to adjourn. I would entertain that motion. I have a motion by Alder Killian. Do I have a second? A second by Alder Neil. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned. Alder Ryan has an announcement she'd like to make.
I would like to make the public and our other alders aware that there's going to be a special meeting tomorrow night of economic development to look at the two proposals that came in regarding the Westside Battery property, and that, from what I understand, there will be an extensive discussion about that, and I'm hoping you will tune in. Thank you.
Thank you. Did they say 5:15?